The Committee on Finance and Taxation, General Government Operations and Youth Development now convenes this hearing. In accordance with the open government law, notices were first sent to the public on Thursday, March 5th, 2015, and again on Monday, March 9th, 2015. For the record, it is Thursday, March 12th, 2015, and the time is now 10:01 a.m. The committee will hear and accept testimony, both oral and written, on the following items: Bill Number 3-33 LS introduced by Senator Morrison, Senator Respecho, and Senator McCready, as corrected by the prime sponsor; an act to amend subsection 5204D of Article 2 of Chapter 5, Title 11 Guam Code annotated relative to authorizing the procurement of sports equipment and supplies for youth and community sports programs; Bill Number 9-33 COR introduced by Senator Dennis Rodriguez Jr.; an act to adopt the rules and regulations relative to responsible alcohol server seller training programs by amending Chapter 2 Alcohol Beverage Control Board of Title 3 Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations Business Regulations; Bill Number 31-33 introduced by Vice Speaker Cruz, an act to amend subsection 26120 of Chapter 26 of Title 11 of the Guam Code annotated relative to inspection of tax returns and other information required to be filed or furnished by the taxpayer; and Bill Number 38-33 LS introduced by myself, an act to modernize the business environment by adopting the Uniform Electronic Transactions Act by adding a new Chapter 91 to Division 3 Title 18 Guam Code annotated. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge my colleagues who are present with me this morning. To my immediate right is Senator Frank Uggan, to his immediate right is Senator Tommy Morrison, to his immediate right is Vice Speaker Cruz, and to my immediate left is my Vice Chair Senator Mary Torres, to her immediate left is Senator Tony Ada, and to his immediate left is Senator Unless otherwise decided by the chairman, those testifying will be recognized in the order they sign up. Written testimony may be read. Lengthy testimony should be summarized, about five minutes. Written testimony should be submitted to the committee for photocopying. Testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the bill or resolution being heard. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of the author or any member of the panel is not permitted. No debate or rebuttal shall be allowed between two individuals testifying. One may submit additional written testimony following the conclusion of this hearing. Individuals will be allowed to present oral testimony only once. The individual may be asked to remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony, as may be desired by members of the panel. When speaking, please make sure that the microphone is on. There's a little button there that you press and a red light will turn on. Individuals are asked to state their name for record purposes. And we'll go ahead and begin this hearing with Bill Number 3-33. And before we hear any public testimony, I'll yield the floor to the bill's sponsor, Senator Morrison, for an opening statement.
Hafay and good morning, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank also the committee for including this Bill 3 on the public hearing agenda this morning. Bill 3, built upon the success of public law 3260, which was enacted in July 2013. Through public law 32-60, Guam's mayors and vice mayors, Department of Parks and Recreation, and Department of Education have continued to make long-awaited improvements to various sports and community recreation facilities. Bill 3 was introduced at the request of mayors, vice mayors, education, and parks and recreation officials to help equip our school and community recreation facilities with much-needed sports inventory. Bill 3 recognizes that some of our youth and families across our island who frequent our village sports and recreation facilities don't always have the access to basic sports equipment and supplies at home, and thus have no choice but to rely on the support of their village mayor's office. Bill 3 seeks to prevent youth and families from losing interest in safe and healthy lifestyle activities, simply because they are unable to afford a basketball, a baseball, a football, or other sports item. Bill 3 supports a long-awaited tradition on Guam where community centers and recreation facilities serve as a second home, a classroom away from the classroom, for children of all ages, a place where values such as self-confidence, cooperation, and trust are strengthened. I look forward to receiving input and recommendations from members of our public, and I look forward to working closely with the committee to ensure that this legislation is improved as necessary and that it moves forward through the legislative process. Thank you all for coming. Ziduas Masi.
Thank you, Senator Morrison. We do have a number of individuals who signed up to testify. What I'll do is, basically, we have one group that's from Department of Parks and Rec. and another group that's our mayors and vice mayors. So I'll break it down into the groups into those two categories so everything can kind of be related to everyone else's testimony. So go ahead and start with the Department of Parks and Recreation, if I can call up Mr. Ray Blas and Mr. Bill Regis. Just please turn on the microphone, state your name for the record, and you may begin at any time.
Hafay and good morning. Vice, I'm the chairman, Senator Michael Siniklas, vice chairman, Mary Torres, Senator, and of course Senator Tommy Morrison, thank you for the bill, Vice Speaker Senator B.J. Cruz, Senator Frank Uggan, Senator Tony Ada, and Senator Dennis Rodriguez. Good morning and hafay. The Department of Parks and Recreation has completed its review of the reference bill and is in full support of the inclusion of the procurement of sports equipment and supplies relative to the purposes authorized by the Limited Gaming Fund. Additionally, DPR would like to request that the bill also include authorization to purchase vehicles to support the maintenance operations and the repair of our recreational facilities. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact us directly. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Blas, Mr. Regis.
Buenas, buenas and hafay. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Senator Mike Siniklas, Senator Uggan, Senator Morrison, Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Torres, Senator Ada, and Senator Rodriguez. My name is Bill Regis. I'm the deputy director for Parks and Recs a little over six weeks. I'm happy to be here, and along with the director, I am in full support of this bill. Thank you very much, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Regis. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for this panel? Sure, Senator Uggan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And just a quick question, because, Mr. Blas, the Department of Parks and Recreation has been doing a good job in terms of, very good job, in terms of taking these resources and either reconstructing or repairing some of our parks and recreation facilities. Would you be averse to perhaps setting a cap, no more than 30% or no more than 40% can be utilized specifically for the purchase of what the bill would authorize? Because I want to continue to see the focus also be on reconstructing or repairing and maintaining facilities.
Just for you to know, Senator Frank Uggan, that right now, down at GSA, we have, it has already been put out to bid the Grove Field, the Lower and Upper Field in Teed and Subo Field, they are using the Limited Fund, Gaming Fund on that. And also, I am going to work on the West Agana, try to put it in shape just like the East Agana all the way down to Adlup and Pachel Stadium too. I would like to fix all the shelters up before the Festback, you know, so it would look very nice. As you know, that there'll be 27 countries other than Guam that will be participating in that Festback.
And then it goes back, Mr. Blas, it goes back to the question that I just posed to you.
Yes, on the vehicles, yes, well.
I understand about expanding it and allowing the possible use of, to purchase vehicles, but it goes back, and this is a question that I would like to also pose to the mayors, Mr. Chairman, as they present their testimony, if they would be averse to setting a cap? Because utilizing these resources and reconstructing and repairing and upgrading and building facilities, I think, was the initial intent of this fund. Now we're looking at expanding that particular application. And as we expand it even more, the question is, what's going to be the focus? Is it going to be purchasing equipment and supplies, and then the field, excuse my expression, but it's happened in the past, but then the field and the training facilities, the recreational facilities are left unmaintained, so to speak, to some degree? So I was just wondering whether you would be averse, and whether the sponsor and the chairman would be averse to at least setting a cap so that on an annual basis, you would know that you have this much for facility repair, maintenance, and possible purchase of vehicles, and this much to possibly purchase supplies and equipment for our own people and our youth. So I just wanted to throw that thought out, because I certainly would like to see that the facilities continue to be the focus of this fund, and then allowance be provided in terms of procuring equipment and supplies. So I'll just leave it at that, Mr. Blas, and Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
I'll be very happy, you know, at least, like you said, 20% or 30% cap on vehicles and equipment, you know, and then the rest will be, you know, we will make sure that we work on the fields and all those things.
Thank you, Senator Uggan. Any other senators have any questions or comments for this panel? Senator Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, what, how many vehicles, do you have a gauge, and how many vehicles are we looking at to support the recreation side or division parks? Because, again, I appreciate the previous speaker regarding not moving away from the intent, and that's why, that's why it's very specific, you know, to still stay within the intent. You know, we're building, we're repairing, we're refurbishing basket courts, but we have no basketballs. We're building baseball fields, but we have no baseballs for these kids. So we're still within the line of the intent. We're just ensuring that we equip the facilities. As the education department stated, there's times too where for, even the gym, yes, it's a gym designed for volleyball games, basketball games, but, you know, we do lay wrestling mats in the gym too for wrestling. So they wanted a little flexibility to purchase wrestling mats, such as the case where at the recreation center, they used to have wrestling mats as well. So if we put a cap, you know, we need to know what that 30% actually is going to be, because remember, this is a fluctuating fund, and it doesn't, you know, we could have a situation where you're actually looking at a certain amount of vehicles. So I'm raising that. I work with my colleagues, I work with the committee, but maybe we may have to look at the avenue within your budget, so, your overall budget. So, or also the Public Recreation Service Fund. So maybe we could look at that as well. But I'll talk with my colleagues about this, so that way we have an understanding of what, how many vehicles we're looking at.
Well, Senator, I'm not going to buy a fleet. I might be getting one vehicle for maintenance and one vehicle for recreation, you know, and, you know, I mean, if I buy two or three vehicles one time, that doesn't mean that I'm going to buy again the next six months or what, you know? We will use the same vehicles for, I have vehicles in our fleet right now that is pretty old right now.
I certainly understand that firsthand, Mr. Director, and I just want to thank you and your deputy, your team at DPR. It's good to hear some of the good news of the plannings that are going on right now with our facilities, and I see it firsthand. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Morrison. Before I dismiss this panel, I just wanted to make my closing comments on it. I very much agree with Senator Uggan. You know, the original intent of this bill was to provide for a funding mechanism to invest in capital improvement projects. So basically, what this bill is going to do is it's going to take money away from capital improvement and use it to spend on sports equipment. And just from an investment perspective, capital improvement investments are purchasing durable goods that are supposed to last, or making durable investments that are supposed to last five years or more, versus spending that same money on sports equipment, which is non-durable and, we know, will typically have to be replaced on a continuous and ongoing basis. So when the bill was first introduced, one of the first things I did was I drove around the island, looking at all of our different parks and our community facilities that are being, supposed to be improved by this fund. And a lot of them are still in very much disrepair, whether it's broken fences or a lack of bleachers at baseball fields in the villages. I mean, there's just all kinds of capital improvement needs that are still out there. And so for me, what I was wrestling with was how can I move forward a bill that's going to take money away from improving the facilities, making those long-term investments, so we can spend the money on the sports equipment when we haven't even finished the first objective of why we set up this fund to begin with, which is to fix the facilities? So my initial reaction was maybe we should put something in the bill that requires first that the director of DPR and then the mayors certify that the projects in their village are either complete, or that funds have already been encumbered to complete them, and then you can fully authorize the remaining money in the account to be spent. So maybe one variation of that, or Senator Uggan's proposal of a certain percentage. But what we don't want to do is take money away from improving the facilities and use it to buy equipment, and then the facilities never get fixed, because all the money's going to the equipment now. You know, so we're going to have to find the balance there, and I'll work with DPR and the mayors to try and see where we can come up with a middle ground that everybody can be satisfied with. How does that sound? Okay.
And also, when I get back to the office, I'll try to forward you what we have already stored for the fixing of facilities within our sports area.
Okay.
And then that way, you can look at it, that it's, you know.
Okay.
So that's why I was just asking about the vehicles, because we really are in need of vehicles.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Blas. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll go ahead and call up the next panel for this particular bill. We have Mayor Ben Gomatautau, Mayor Doris Luhon, Mayor Ernest Chargaluff, Vice Mayor Ken Santos, and the executive director of the Mayor's Council of Guam, Mr. Angel Sablan. Please join us up in front. We also have Mayor Rudy Matanani who signed up, from Jigoo. And Mayor Blas from Assamaina, but I don't note here that you're going to be providing But if you are Mayor Blas, please feel free to join us as well. Thank you very much for joining us. Everyone at the table is important, so I guess we'll just start from left to right. Okay? Mayor Matanani, if you can go ahead and begin, and just make sure the microphone's on and state your name for the record. You may begin at any time.
Good morning, senators. Senator B.J. Cruz, Senator Tom Morrison, I thank you for this public hearing, Senator Uggan, Senator Siniklas, Senator Torres, Senator Ada, Senator Rodriguez, and Senator Underwood. Thank you very much for being here, to hear us out, and, you know, I guess, listening to us. I'll start now with my written testimony that I'm going to read. I am Mayor Rudy Matanani of the municipality of Jigoo. Submit this written testimony in favor of public law 33-3, I mean, Bill 3-33. The village of Jigoo, as you know, is the second-largest village as far as population is concerned, that exists of 23,000 and rising pretty rapidly, according to the last census that was taken. Also, we are the biggest village as far as last man is concerned, of about two-thirds of the northern end of the island here in Guam. Jigoo has five public schools and two private schools with a population of 5,500 students, not to mention the other students that attend the private schools all over the island. Saying that, we have one gym, one baseball field, one outdoor basketball court, and two outside damaged basketball courts, and one damaged tennis court. We're in the dire need of the facilities and sports equipment. For example, we have 12 youth baseball teams that play in our one softball field. I'd like to thank the sponsors for this bill, you know, for just looking out after the people that have voted for us to help the future, our future leaders, which is the kids and the seniors that, you know, look up to us, that provide the facilities that we have for them, and I thank you, and, you know, one of the things that I also want to add is, maybe, you know, we cannot just keep building these facilities and not safeguard them. You know, for example, last year, I refurbished a basketball court at 506, and in three months, they devastated the place. And, you know, we cannot just keep spending money to rebuild these things and not safeguard them. We've got to always protect our investments. So I thank you, honorable senators, for listening to this short testimony. That means a lot to the, actually, to the people of this whole island, our beautiful island of Guam. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Matanani. Mayor Ernest.
Good morning, Senator. Members of the panel, I want to go through them, but I already made a colleague went through them, but thank you very much for all of this panel. I'm on my seventh year as a mayor, and since I came in, I have to juggle between money that is given to me from the government and my own funds to accommodate the requests at the various sports programs that go through my village. And it's very disheartening when you want to do something for the kids, but you don't have anything. This bill gives us the leverage, the ability, to provide not only for entrance fees, but also for their sports equipment and supplies. They're going out there using the same old balls since 19, forgotten, the balls that don't, you know, actually give them good leverage to how it is when it's in the real, reaching the real balls. And, you know, when you have to use your own funds, sometimes I already have to, I'm going to be working for free, bringing back slavery. But, you know, the leverage that we have is that we're being flexible, and it's really up to each individual mayor how they mingle and how they juggle their funds. But this leverage gives us a little more flexibility and the ability to accommodate the students, which most likely, most of them are all students. And with the adults, we can require that they try to fend for themselves. When it comes to middle, elementary, middle and high school, I think it's incumbent on us leaders to provide a playing field for them to go ahead and play ball instead of having to worry about funding. And that's where I come in, and, you know, like you said, it's disheartening that we don't have the money we can provide for entrance fees. But when it comes to uniform, the kids are running around, you know, having car washes, doing things that they should be on the field playing and practicing rather than trying to raise funds to provide for their uniforms and their equipment and supplies. So I want to thank those that introduced this bill and those who are hearing. I hope that you act favorably upon it, and as far as, you know, the funding about, you know, Parks and Rec, about vehicles, well, that, you know, that too can probably be used by our, you know, respective mayors. But whilst for me, I think the funding is mostly going to be used for sports facilities as well as for uniforms and supplies. And I want to thank, and I forgot to introduce myself, Mayor Ernest Chargaluff, the village and so on. So I want to thank every one of you guys, and I ask that you please give us the support, because without you guys, you don't have money. And maybe the next time I come here, you know, I'll probably be on full staff, because I don't have enough money to support myself, because I've spent it all in my village. So I ask you guys to please support this bill and give it, give us that flexibility and ability to provide, you know, whatever needs our students, because a healthy body is made for healthy minds for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ernest. Mayor Doris?
Buenas and hafay. Chairman, Senator Mike Siniklas, Vice Chair Mary Torres, Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz, Senator Morrison, Senator Uggan, Senator Ada, Senator Rodriguez, and Senator Underwood. Thank you for the opportunity for hearing my testimony today in favor, in support of the, of Bill 3-33 LS. For the record, my name is Doris Flores Luhon, Mayor of Inalan. I applaud you, Senator Morrison, and Senator McCready, and Senator Respecho, for introducing this bill. Thank you for your thoughts and concern and commitment to instill the values of sportsmanship, leadership, teamwork, and self-confidence in our youth. Unfortunately, for the past seven years, Inalan has not had a team that will be participating in tournaments like the Cow Rippen Babe Ruth Softball, Baseball Team. This year, we were fortunate enough to have a little funding from the Lejeune Field, and we were able to come up with a team, and you should have seen the parents and our youth, they're very excited to be part of this event, and I am happy that we have something for our kids. Passing of this bill into public law will provide us the necessary funding to repair and equip our sports recreational facilities and community centers. I humbly ask your utmost support and pass this law, a bill into law. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Doris. Mayor Ben?
Is that all right? I know everybody, and I hope you excuse me for that. I am really in favor of this, only for one little thing here, about this Bill Number 3-33 LS. It's the one-third that you're requesting to give it to us for the mayors. It should not be the same with the Parks and Recreation, because we're different, the number of people participating. We have more responsibility, more, more sports going to happen for each village. So that's what I disagree on that part. Other than that, everything's okay. And I want to thank you for having us here.
Thank you, Mayor Ben.
My name is Angel Sablan, the executive director of the Mayor's Council of Guam, and one of my duties, aside from testifying on my own, is to also testify on behalf of mayors and vice mayors. And in this case, I'm going to read testimony from the president of the Mayor's Council, Mayor Paul McDonald, who's undergoing some medical procedures right now, and also from Mayor Robert Hoffman from Sinahania, who's ironically, in Washington, D.C., in a conference trying to get funds for basically the same things, for improving sports facilities and operating youth centers and youth camps for our children. So, from Mayor Paul McDonald, and good morning to all of you, Mr. Chairman, of course, our sponsors and all the honorable senators, Mr. Chairperson, members of the committee. I am Paul M. McDonald, the mayor of Agania Heights and president of the Mayor's Council of Guam. Hafay to you all, and Ziduas Masi, for granting me the opportunity to address the Committee on Bill 3-33 LS. Without any reservations whatsoever, I wholeheartedly support this bill. At times when many of our sports facilities are in need of additional funding to procure sports equipment and make necessary repairs, we welcome any assistance towards improving and promoting sports in our communities. Therefore, I am in support of Bill 3-33. I am also requesting that the funds be authorized to be expended on repairs and upgrades of the Department of Education facilities due to the facilities being used by our communities as well. Providing our children and youth with adequate recreational equipment will benefit and play a big role in contributing to the mischievous activities and youth resorting to gangs and drug abuse. As vanguards of our community and the first responders to various situations, we seek your support of Bill Number 3-33 and request that you continue to give us a support in providing services to our community. Again, thank you for allowing me to testify before this committee, Mayor Paul M. McDonald. And from Mayor Robert Hoffman, the Honorable Senator Michael F. Q. Siniklas, chairperson Committee on Finance and Taxation, GGO, and Youth Development. Dear Senators Siniklas and members of the committee, in 2000, the Sinahania Youth Center and sporting facilities were closed due to the lack of personnel and funding. This youth center, once operated by the This youth center, once operated by the Department of Parks and Recreation, have been a part of the community since the early 1980s. The sporting facilities were over 35 years old and have seen better times. With some creative rethinking, retooling, and sound financial management, our office was able to reopen the youth center and reopen the baseball field and multipurpose court to the community in 2005, thanks to Senator B.J. Cruz's and Senator Tina Munro Barnes' leadership and oversight. The Sina Hanya Community Center and Sporting Facilities services hundreds of village youth and youth from neighboring communities ranging from ages seven to seventy-seven, seven days a week. Our center has been very active these past years, hosting 11 cycles of the Adult Education Courses GED in conjunction with GCC, our annual sensational summer camp, and Christmas Camp for Kids, as well as offering Zumba music classes, numerous seminars, and meetings as well as play host to a plethora of nonprofit groups who use the center regularly. We wish to thank Senator Morrison and the co-sponsors Senator Spishu and McCready for introducing this legislation which will increase the flexibility of the limited gaming fund. We do have some amendments we'd like to suggest. Number one, to allow the use of gaming funds to be used for sports related activities to include unauthorized team sponsorship and uniforms. While this will certainly provide relief, we want to assure this body and the public that it will be good financial stewards and equally support all sports and activities. We will still encourage athletes to continue to fundraise and earn what they can, which helps build character, togetherness, and a deeper sense of responsibility to the team. Some villages have more teams, sports and players than others, and I anticipate hard decisions ahead for some of my colleagues. Second, to allow the purchase of computer equipment, audio visual equipment aids for our computer classes, labs, and other related educational tools and equipment. Not everyone plays sports and this would be in line with increased students access to STEM. This would also enable us to meet the technology needs of tomorrow, a passion and a platform that both you, Senator Morrison, and I are big sponsors of. Third, to allow for the purchase of musical instruments and performing arts equipment and aids. I would be remiss if this wasn't included. With all the amazing talent our island has to offer and the numerous studies that prove that music and performing arts have so many positive benefits and attributes, this would enable us to prepare the next generation of creative minds. Fourth, lastly, we ask that the verbiage be included so we can use the funds to meet federal and private grant matching requirements. For example, our community has been working with the University of Guam's Children's Healthy Living Program, and there are possibilities to increase resources through micro grants and fund matching. We want to take this opportunity to also recognize former Senator Chris Duennas, a son of Sina Hanya, who has been a champion in this field through public law 3260, which gave our villages the resources and tools. With the previous two allotments totaling about $28,000, many villages were able to perform repairs and upgrades to our facilities. We are not there yet and some have longer ways to go, but this is a good start for all the parties involved to get our community active, healthier, and live better. Since we have reinvested in our facilities through Compact Impact Renovation and Rehabilitation Funds, made possible by Governor Calvo, the Public Safety and Social Education Program Funds, made possible by this body, and private donations, we have seen a decline in crime, violence, and vandalism. National statistics would show that communities that offer youth and teen-related programs have declined in drug use, violence, and teen pregnancy. So far, the kids and teens have been great community partners and have shown their respect and desire to become productive members of our society. Since we've created an environment conducive for learning and fun, promoting healthy lifestyle choices and active lifestyles, the kids feel safer and cared for. We are firm believers that if you invest in your community, your community will invest in you. Thank you and Sezus Massey, sincerely, Robert R.D.C. Hoffman, Mayor, and Rudy D. Ariarty, Vice Mayor. And on my own testimony, senators, I certainly agree with all the mayors and I'm sure you will not find one vice mayor or mayor that will not support this legislation. It is true that we get one-third of the limited gaming tax money and it is for capital outlay. Our only difficulty with that is the money doesn't come in in one lump sum. It's given to us a little at a time. And with 19 villages, our first increment was $236,000. Our second increment was $312,787. So so far, we have a little bit over half million dollars that has been given to the Mayor's Council of Guam under the game, limited gaming tax. But we have 19 villages. And the 19 villages, there are more small villages than there are big villages. So when we go into our meetings, of course, the smaller villages always win over the big villages when it comes to deciding how the money is, is given out or allotted. And so it always comes down to equality, equal division amongst all villages. So each village gets about $13,000, $12,000 from the first and the second increment. So thus far, they already have $25,000 approximately that they can use. Now we also have the Compact Impact Eight money that we have used to, many of the villages have used to improve their facilities, their community centers, their recreational facilities. Right now, we're working on phase two, which is the $300,000 from the Compact Impact Fund. And many of you, if you drive around, you're going to see some improvement in many of the villages as far as their recreational facilities are concerned. And like I said, although the money is for capital outlay in this law, when we receive it at $13,000, $12,000 per village, it's very hard to put out a bid to construct anything or to improve anything on a huge basis because $12,000 or $13,000 will not make it. The only way the mayors can do it is hold on to their money. But the thing is, when do we get the rest of the money? It fluctuates. It just depends on how much money is given to the, to the gaming tax and how much, and when, and when do we get it? I heard a question about setting a percentage from Senator Frank Augen. It will not work with the Mayor's Council of Guam. We have 19 villages with 19 different needs. Some of them may want to continue to improve their facilities, but others may have already improved their facilities and what they need is to be able to purchase equipment, sponsor teams. To give you an example, in the past fiscal year, out of our own operational funds that are given out to all the mayors, we spent over $116,000 just to sponsor teams in all our villages and to provide uniforms for them. If these kids had nowhere else to go, couldn't find money for their uniforms, couldn't find money for their sponsorships, couldn't find money to pay for their, for the management of those leagues, paying for umpires and referees and whatnot, where would they have gone? There would have been no games. It'd be wonderful to have brand-new fields, but it would be more devastating if we had nobody to play on those fields. And so this is an opportunity, really a flexibility, if you will, for mayors to use some of these funds to be able to purchase those equipments for those teams and to sponsor those teams. Because we all know it, the coaches and the managers won't go anywhere else. They can go to the big businesses and they go to the private places, but their last stop, sometimes for many of them, their first stop is always the mayor's office. What can you do to help our kids? And parents, we get, they get calls from parents, from brothers and sisters that have played before, they say, hey, the mayor sponsored us before, I'm sure they'll sponsor you again. They bought our uniforms before, I'm sure they'll buy your uniforms again. And so when we release some of these funds from our public safety funds that we get from all of you annually, then we can use those funds to do other programs like in preventing graffiti, in preventing violence and crime in the villages, augmenting the neighborhood watch programs. But when you take $100,000, $116,000 and you consider that those just went to uniforms and to sponsorships, when it could have gone to other programs, this gaming tax amendment will certainly go a long ways. And like I said, the reason why I say that the percentage will not work is because every village is different. One size does not fit all. Daredo, for example, luckily for Daredo, they have the flea market funds and they are able, from their MPC, use some of those funds to sponsor teams and to buy uniforms. But what about Jigo? Jigo spent about $15,000 last year from their own funds that we appropriate to them. Malissou spent over $9,000 in sponsorship and uniforms. Tumuning, Tumun and Harmon spent $8,000 from their allotments to sponsor these teams. The only village that actually didn't spend any money for sponsorships is the person right next to me, Mayor Gomatauto. And that's because maybe he doesn't have teams or they go someplace else and play for Aston and Maina or Hagatna. But he's here supporting this amendment because he's supporting, he's supporting the other mayors. And so we'd just like to personally thank Senator Morrison and Senator Spishu and Senator McCready for giving us another option. Like I say, we do have funds to continue to renovate our facilities and we continue through these gaming money. In fact, Agad is doing it right now. They've used up their, both of their allotments of 13 and 12 to continue to upgrade their facilities. But somewhere, we're going to have already upgraded everything, so doesn't it make sense to be able to have the flexibility to use these funds for these other purposes? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sablon, Vice Mayor.
Good morning, senators. I am Ken Santos, Vice Mayor of Tumuning, Tumun and Harmon. I am in favor of this bill. Before I was a vice mayor, I was a coach for 34 years for Tumuning in baseball. I've dealt with sports and baseball. I played football for Tumuning, but I was a coach for 34 years. And I never really got any help from the mayor's office back then. They always said they didn't have any funding. Just recently now, we're starting to, like what Mr. Sablon said, sponsor teams from whatever we can. But the kids and back in Tumuning, we had a lot of teams. We're just lucky that we don't have that much teams now that we're able to sponsor the teams that we have. But I can, I can see what would happen if all the teams come back again. We don't have the funds for that. But I applaud you guys for giving us something for the kids. It's a start, to start for them. Equipment is very important. I always go with safety first. Facility is very important. And I know that we can't do all this with this bill, but it's something that I appreciate and we can give back to the kids. And hopefully, we use the money the right way, the way we're supposed to use it, and get these equipments for these kids and whatever left over, try and fix the facility as best we can. But another problem the mayor's office have is we don't have that many manpower. Most of us only have five maintenance. And for the big villages, we have to do a lot of other stuff. So as far as keeping up with facility and stuff like that, we need the help from other people. Thank God that some of the businesses in Guam were able to help with our youth. But I'm glad that you senators, Senator Cruz, Morrison, Augen, Sinikles, Torres, Adat, Rodriguez, Underwood, I applaud you guys. Thank you. Thank you very much for bringing out this bill.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for this panel? Senator Augen?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Mrs. Sablon. I certainly appreciate your perspective in terms of eventually all the facilities are going to be upgraded, so we need to have that flexibility to spend money. But if you recall very intently, you just highlighted that phase two, what is of the upgrades, it's approximately $300,000 coming from the Compact Impact Funds. So that really is a discretionary fund that is applied and used by the Governor of Guam in terms of deciding where those additional resources can go. So they're not necessarily continuous in nature, unlike in this case. This particular funding is continuous in nature and I would like to see that in fact, resources continue to be set aside to upgrade and to improve and to provide additional access to recreational sports facilities. That, that's really where that comment came in, comes from in terms of being able to have that flexibility. Let's expand it, let's provide that authorization so that you can expand some of these funds specifically for sports equipments and supplies. But let us not forget the facility upgrades and the overall maintenance of these particular recreational facilities, so to speak. So that, I mean, that's, that's really where my perspective is coming from. I think it's very much applicable to Parks and Rec, giving them the flexibility, possibly setting that cap so that they can continue to maintain because they have a number of sports facilities island-wide. But in this case, I certainly will yield to the chairman and to the sponsor the legislation in terms of whether a cap would be applied. But please be very mindful that phase one and phase two of Compact Impact Funding are not continuous, is not a continuous funding source unless that is part of the provision that is applied and approved by the governor. So, so in this case, unless there's an MOU agreement between the Mayor's Council of Guam and the Chief Executive, the Governor of Guam, that every single year, you will get an additional allocation of $300,000, then I think it's very good that the governor was able to identify $300,000 for phase two of upgrading some of our facilities. But, but that's not a continuous funding source. And that's why I would, I would, I mention that because supplies and equipment are extremely critical in terms of providing the mayors as well as Parks and Rec that flexibility, but also the facilities. And it comes back to, all we have to do is turn the clock, maybe five years, maybe 10 years back. And where were our facilities back then when a funding mechanism such as this was not available? So, thank you. But I appreciate your comments and there's no.
And we certainly agree with you. We, we're not asking that the, the use of these funds, that the renovation or construction of it be taken out. We're just asking that the amendment be, be approved to provide us a flexibility. And perhaps when you sit on that seat that's giving us the Compact and Impact Eight Funds now, that you will continue supporting us through Compact Impact Funds to renovate our villages.
Thank you, Mrs. Sablon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Senator Augen. Any other senators have any questions for this panel? Senator Underwood, I'm sorry. Let me, let me yield to Senator Underwood.
Thank you very much, mayors, and we certainly appreciate all the work that you're doing to provide support for our youth. I just wanted to do a follow-up with Mayor Gomatauto. You had noticed that, you had noted that the proportion that's provided to the mayors in comparison to the Parks and Rec really is not adequate. And so do you have any recommendations on, and the proportion that should be given?
It's two-thirds instead of one-third. And the other two, the other one-third should be one-sixth for each one of them. That makes it a whole. But really, it's, I want you to be a hero on this. By approving it, be generous and be a hero. The people, the community of the entire island will love you for this and you'll get your election someday.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Underwood. Senator Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, actually, Mayor Gomatauto, that was the original plan, you know, but what happened is the, the, you know, of course, we understand that with DPR, a lot of these facilities are within the village communities, right? So there was a compromise made, knowing that these facilities are also used to, in collaboration with the mayors, to be used for the communities as well. And there was an understanding, that's how those facilities would be used. So that's why we had to figure out a, an idea and how that we can also help DPR while helping the mayors at the same time. I just want to note that that was the original plan that we were working on. Of course, when we go through this process, you know, it does, there's a lot of compromising that has to take place. I'll certainly look into other alternatives. But I also do want to go back to, to the mayors and it was a coach actually from the Guam Youth Football League, I'm going to, yes, approached our office and we're looking at sources to help their youth football league. Their, their kids come from all the villages and, and they were trying to figure out how they can get direct support. And a lot, a lot of this was the help. And a lot, a lot of this was the help of the mayors too, that they, they kinda had to identify which youth is in this village, which youth, so they were approaching the mayor, letting the mayor. I think maybe you may know who this individual is, but they were trying to devise a plan of how much percentage they can get from each mayor so that way they can help their youth football league. So I, I understand, even with just at Cow Ripken, the little leagues and right off the bat, that could just wipe you, wipe you out right off the bat.
To make it equal, really, why don't you make DPR one-twenty and one-twenty for the entire, each, each village? That will take care of each mayor. That would be equal. Why would the DPR gets more than us? When being one-third, they get more because percentage-wise, we're one-nineteen to each village. That makes it one-twenty for them. So we've been robbed.
I, I understand, Mayor. I was...
I think I'm wrong. I'm having some wrong in my mouth.
No, actually, no, no.
I was a mathematician at school.
I understand, Mayor. And again, that was the, the original plan. And everyone's actually getting the equal, the equal amount. And the idea was, what was, DPR was doing was, of course, they were going out and doing big projects at a time and it was hopefully the goal, as Mr. Sablon was stating, that the mayor's council, as a council, will go out and do big projects from south to north or north to south as big projects. But of course, you know, they, as mentioned, they all agreed that that would be better that we split it, sponsor more teams, get more teams in the leagues, which is great. And I know based on the listing, I was looking at the listing, actually, most of those leagues or teams in the leagues are actually out of the villages, the office, the mayor's office. It would be nice to see every village have a, have a team at one time. But certainly looking to that mayor and working with DPR and how these, these facilities that are getting repaired are, are shared with the mayors. As we know, up in Baragada, there is an MOU in place, so that way, because Baragada, I believe, needs, needed more facilities, but it's also a facility for all the, the entire island. But they have an MOU, so that way, when, as that facility is getting repaired, it's also used for the village communities, not just for certain events of DPR.
But fairness, for fairness sake, it should be one-twenty, really. Twenty old entity. Each village is one, DPR is one, and it's one-twenty. Each one get one-twenty. That's fair, right there. Mathematico.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Senator Morrison. You know, I appreciate the testimony from everybody present and I appreciate the numbers, Mr. Sablon, because that's where my, my antenna really goes up quickly. And so you guys are getting a five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars a year, basically, for, that's the allotment.
Not a year. That's how much we've received thus far.
Thus far, for the last how many months?
For the past year.
Past year. So five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars a year.
We're expecting another allotment here pretty soon, but we don't know how much.
But that's for a new year's cycle. So we're looking at about five hundred and forty-eight thousand a year on average.
Yeah, pre calendar, because it won't be fiscal, because the last three hundred thousand that we receive was already in this fiscal year.
Okay. So what are we looking at on a fiscal year basis?
Like I said, for, for 2014, we only got the two hundred and some thousand, because it just started. So, yeah, probably this year, we'll probably have a bigger amount.
A larger amount, because you received three hundred and twelve thousand and you're looking at maybe another three hundred and twelve thousand?
Hopefully.
Okay. So maybe six hundred thousand dollars then. Now, for me, right, what really starts to get me worried is, already, you guys are testifying that this twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars that you receive for CIP is already a very low amount. And now we're talking about further diluting that amount by having it apply for sports equipment and supplies. And then one of the testimonies that you read, Mr. Sablon, was to dilute it even further for sponsorships and computer equipment and musical instruments and matching grants. And so, you know, for me, I just look at it and like, how are we ever going to accomplish the objective of fixing the facilities when we're constantly diluting the priorities, trying to please everybody? You know, so maybe what I would like to prefer is that the mayor's council prioritizes the fixing of the facilities. And what we'll do is we'll authorize in law that once you guys certify that your facilities have already been fixed or that your, that the funds have already been encumbered for their repair, then you're fully authorized to expend it for all those things. We can do a whole laundry list, but first, as the mayors, you'll need to certify that your facilities are fixed. And then that will empower the mayors then to be able to work with Parks and Rec to fix the facilities in their villages and work with the governor to get the Compact Impact Money to fix the other facilities in their villages and then use whatever's left here to catch the difference. And then from there, once it's all done, then you can certify that we're good to go and then you guys can spend the rest for all those other, other programs and projects. I mean, how does that sound? Because for me, I'm just worried that we're splitting pennies and we're not gonna be able to accomplish any of the original objectives that we set out with this bill.
The only difficulty I see there is that then we're gonna have to start deciding what facilities we fix. And we have tennis courts, we have basketball courts, we still haven't decided where we're gonna put a boxing arena, but if, if we do decide that we're gonna fix a tennis court with the funds we have, that's gonna take a longer time before we are able to support the kids, because not all the kids play tennis, very few. But they also are a sports facility, they have to be fixed. If we're going to, to do it that way, it's still gonna be back to the same old way of the mayors are gonna be spending money out of their public safety funds to support or to sponsor. All I'm saying is, it's, you're gonna have to make the mayors now decide what facility they're gonna fix. Are they just gonna fix baseball fields because a lot of kids play, play baseball and you wanna certify those first? Or you wanna fix basketball courts, because some play basketball court? Do you wanna fix a swimming pool or do you wanna fix a volleyball court? So, like I said, one size does not fit you. You're not going to be able to, to get that certification. And if it's only twenty-five thousand dollars at a time, your certification is not gonna come until three more years from now. And so I...
But, but the alternative that you're presenting is the facility stays broken while we spend on sports equipment for the other facilities.
See, this is where we're, we're having a misunderstanding. We're not saying that we're not gonna spend the money on fixing our facility. We are, and we're doing it right now. They just want the flexibility to be able to, at the time when it's needed, to sponsor teams and to buy sports equipment. It doesn't mean that that's what they're going to do with the money that they get. They are, currently, they are all fixing facilities with the money they have from the gaming tax.
Right.
And they will continue to do so. All we're asking is that give them the flexibility to be able to, if there's no more money in their, in their public safety funds, or if they can't support anymore through that, that they have these funds to be able to support a thousand dollars for this team or fifteen hundred dollars for that team. It's not using twenty-five thousand dollars all at one time to sponsor someone. It's just the flexibility to be able to, to have those games. But, but on the onset, it is understood by everybody that these funds are going to be used to renovate the facilities that we have. Because safety for our kids in the playing fields is also our utmost concern. We can't just put them out there to play when the fields are not ready, whether it be a basketball court, a volleyball court, a baseball field, a softball field or whatnot, or a football field. But we don't want to be asked to given a choice to go and fix a football field before a, a baseball field, just because we wanna certify that first, because we're going to sponsor a, a team. We, we all fully understand and we can, we can give you a resolution that that's our understanding is that these funds are to renovate and to rehabilitate and to refurbish recreational facilities within our villages. Just the leftover funds that we have, allow us to use it to sponsor teams.
And I think we're saying the same thing, because all I'm saying is certify that that's done and then you can spend it for all those things. You know, and if we don't have a certification requirement, then we're opening the door for the, the facilities to still be broken and for a mayor, you know, at their own discretion to choose to sponsor a team versus fixing up, fixing up the facility. And so as Senators, you know, every dollar, you know, we're accountable for that. And so granted, we wanna give the mayors all the authorization we can for them to be able to take care of the people in their villages, but we also need to understand that the priorities that we're setting for these dollars and the legislation we're enacting is gonna translate into the quality of life that our people have in their respective villages. And so while, all of us up here, we would all love to sponsor every single sports team by every single uniform and every single baseball and basketball for everybody that wants it. But in the end, are we taking that money away from fixing the very facilities that those sports equipment and sponsorships and uniforms are going to be used at? And that's the whole purpose of the original language of this bill, is to be able to fix those facilities. And so all I'm suggesting, and maybe actually what we're going to push for is, we can authorize all those other expenditures after you're able to certify that your facilities are all fixed. And I think that that, that would be a fair compromise.
I'm still saying though, Mr. Chairman, that the amount of money that we get per village, twelve thousand dollars, no contractor is gonna touch a field or a basketball court or whatever to fix it with that kind of money.
I understand that, but the mayor's, the mayor's council receives five hundred and forty-eight thousand and then you guys decide to divide it up into those smaller lots per village. I think the mayors need to come back together and figure out how to better spend the money to actually fix the capital equip, the capital outlay projects that are out there versus, you know, trying to just divide it all up and appease everybody at once. Because what you're saying is, the amounts are so low because you're dividing it that way, so why don't we just spend it in this other way? And it all goes back to how are we prioritizing the, the money that comes in to begin with? So, but that's, that's on the mayor's side. I think you guys can work that on, on your side. For us, on the legislative side, the question becomes, what exactly are we going to authorize and why are we going to be authorizing it? So I'll work with my colleagues and we'll see where, where the bill goes from there.
I just also like to mention that we're sponsoring them now and we're buying uniforms from them now, so the fields they are using has to be an approved field. So basically, at the present time, they are using fields that are playable and are usable. To get a certification, who's going to certify that these fields are safe?
The mayor. The mayor will certify that your facility has either been fixed or that the funds have been encumbered for them to be fixed already.
They're gonna certify now that they are work, they're, they're, they're safe because they're using it now.
That way, we can understand that you don't need, that would basically be a certification that you don't need any more capital improvement money for your facilities. That's basically what that certification would mean, that all of your capital outlay projects that were supposed to be funded by this original bill have already been fully funded. And that's fine. I mean, if you can certify in your village that you're good to go, then by all means, you know?
Yeah. Okay. All right. But on the other issue of how do we, I'll invite you to come to our mayor's council meeting and see how they deliberate on how they split the money.
I understand. I understand that that's a unique, a unique environment and I don't envy you.
I've been with them now almost eight years and it's very hard to say, don't make it equal.
I understand. And that's why on our side here, when it comes to what we're appropriating, we need to also be able to, you know, factor that in as well. But I appreciate you guys being here and offering your testimony today.
And we, we thank you for all your help and support. So whatever you give us, give us that flexibility to allow them to be able to use.
Thank you very much. We will definitely give a form of that in this bill. Appreciate it. If there are no further questions for this panel, we'll go ahead and dismiss this panel. Mayor Alvarez, you wanted to testify as well? Okay, I'm sorry, we don't have you on our sheet here, but by all means, please. Mayor Cruz, did you want to join us as well?
Good morning, Senators, Mr. Chairman. My name is Dale Alvarez, I'm the mayor of San Rita. And I've been sitting down, I wasn't gonna testify, but everybody hit the nail on the head. Is there something disturbing here? Well, when you say Parks and Rec, you know, I've been calling Parks and Rec, not with Mr. Blas, but way back before that. They said that San Rita softball field and the basketball courts are my responsibility. So far, I've been very fortunate, I fixed one basketball court. It's, like you say, if you want my certification, I'll certify it's ready to go. Right now, the island, the whole island is using my baseball field because I think I'm the only baseball field that's real maintained. And that's because I'm using my NAF. I do a lot of bingo fundraisers to up, every year I have to fix the restroom and everything. So when you said Parks and Rec, I sure would like to use their help when I call them. But the season just started last week or two weeks ago and I have to fix the restroom because, you know, they vandalize everything. And I put in a lot of money in that baseball field. Now to think that Parks and Rec can help me, I would really appreciate that if they're gonna be getting funding from this bill. And, you know, like I said, the Compact Impact really helped me. I'm just waiting now for the money from Phase Two to do my other basketball court. I've applied for grants, believe it or not, I've been turned down because they consider my village a high income. And I've been trying to fight that. My village may be a lot of high-income people living in there, but they too got other responsibilities. You know, when I go ask for entrance fees and things like that, I get turned away. So I just find other ways to fix my field and sponsor my teams. And I got a lot of coaches that don't wanna coach because no money for entrance fee or uniform. They don't, they're not the type to go beg for money for uniform. So I said, I'll help you as, as much as I can. Just for your information, I got nine teams coming out this season, not to include the Masters. We gotta think of our elderly athletics, you know, that they wanna play too. So this year, I didn't foot one because I'm running out of funds. So, yeah, I just wanna clarify something here about Parks and Rec. They told me all those sports facilities in San Rita belongs to the mayor. And it's my duty to fix it up, my obligation. So I was just confused, that's why I decided to come up and, you know, hopefully we can make an MOU with the Department of Rex that help the mayors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Alvarez. That would, I'm sorry, Ma'am, Mr. Blas, Mayor Blas, please. I, I thought that we were completed, but I didn't realize that you were there.
Buenos dias, Senator Morrison, I thank you, Senator McCready and Senator Espixio for bringing this up. Senator Nicholas and Senator Torres, Senator Ada, Senator Rodriguez and Senator Underwood, Dr. Underwood, Duncan, and Mr. Ousma, for giving everyone, the community, the island this time to address this issue. It's been a long time. As I used to coach Daredo Road Runners and we had to come out with our own funding. I am now in Aston Maena and we have a baseball, good baseball players in Aston Maena, to include Adilop and Nimitz Hill, but they cannot play with us because we don't have a baseball field. We used to. And trying to get back that baseball field to fix it up, I found out that Lot 492 in Aston was given back to the Anchechua Land Commission and given back to the original landowners. So we don't have any baseball field in Aston, to include Maena and Nimitz Hill. I'm trying to work with the military, hopefully that they can make us use their field up there. That is really something. The only field I would look at is Adilop, because Adilop minus the governor's office is the jurisdiction of Aston Maena. So I'm trying to get back, where, where can I get these kids to come and play baseball? They go to Tamooning to play baseball, Sina Hani, Ganja Heights. But they wanna play in the, in the village that they grew up with. You know, their neighbors are right there, they play together. You know, we do have basketball also. Basketball, I've been trying hard to get them together. What it is, is that getting them to play in your own community is what they want. So any, any field that is available or basketball court that we can fix. We just had renovated, like Jigo, last year we had renovated a basketball court. We found out that the lights were off and the reason why, they were vandalized. Somebody tried to get the wires down. So how can we keep our community safe? One of the things we need to is safeguard by having, you know, G4S or somebody. What I'm doing now is the neighborhood crime watch and I hope that that will work. But Senators, Speaker, I'd like to ask that we support this in one way, for the kids to have time to, to get together and play at their own villages and also go to San Rita and play baseball. But we don't have a field, so I like to find whereabouts in the community of Aston, being a small village, two thousand two hundred, we are small, but we have a lot of kids that wants to go out there and do something better than graffiti or going to somebody's house and taking things that doesn't belong to them. This is what we need to, to defer to. And recreation sports is one of the things. You know, Aston Maena, Adilop and Nimitz Hill has no schools, no genation, no baseball field, no football field, no recreational facilities and no other sports field except for an outdoor basketball court. A basketball court that is, that is used, you know, by many, many that comes here. And then we also have a basketball court in Maena, but it's owned by the Maena Catholic Church, which I like to help them out too, but because it belongs to church, I have no say-so. At this time, our recreational area is dilapidated and in need of major repairs and our community center is temporarily a recreational area. The kids come in during the day after school and they wanna play basketball. They come in and play dodgeball in the center. But I'm trying very much to try and get them some funding to help them out. One of the kids just came in two weeks ago asking, Mayor, when are we gonna have a coach? You know, coaches are rare nowadays unless they get paid. But again, this bill doesn't call for personnel. If anyone out there, Senators, wants to come and volunteer, please feel free. If anyone out there, senators, wants to come and volunteer, please feel free. We have a lot of kids that will be playing this summer with basketball. Again, I ask you senators to please support us with this. Along with Mayor Ernestier and Mayor Dale, we need your support. Todos, hensu, you know, please, look at our kids that are going to be in your shoes one day, because this is where they go. They do not become DOC tenants, they become senators. And I know some of you have played with the baseball, and the basketball, and any sports when you were young. Dankul and Asidu Usmas, for giving us this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you all very much for joining us this morning. If there are no other individuals to testify on Bill 9-33, we'll go ahead and conclude the hearing for this bill. Thank you very much. We will now move on to the next item on the agenda. Okay, I'd like to see them, but I'll go ahead and yield to him. We'll go ahead and continue this hearing on Bill Number 9-33, introduced by Senator Rodriguez, an act to adopt the rules and regulations relative to responsible alcohol server seller training programs by amending Chapter 2, Alcoholic Beverage Control Board of Title 3, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations and Business Regulations. And at this time, I'd like to yield to Senator Rodriguez for his opening statement on the bill.
Good morning. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak on this bill, to briefly give a synopsis of the bill, but also for having a public hearing on it. What Bill 9 is, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee, and the public, is an act to adopt the rules and regulations relative to responsible alcohol server selling training programs by amending Chapter 2 of Alcoholic Beverage Control Board of Title 3, the Guam Administrative Rules and Regulation, Business Regulations. About 20 months ago, this body, the Guam Legislature, passed Public Law 3251, that provides for the mandate requirement for anyone who wishes to sell and serve alcohol, for them to obtain a server/seller training program certification. And so, really, just to give a little bit of history, this was something that was inspired by members from our Department of Youth Affairs, and members from our Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, who had already put into place a volunteer program that would train servers and sellers of alcohol establishments. And so what this bill does, Mr. Chairman, is, because the initial law had required the ABC Board to promulgate rules and regulations within 150 calendar days, and that has not happened, is really to move this process forward, and for this body to adopt these initial rules and regs, and then for the ABC Board then to make any changes in the future. We've been working, in anticipation of this public hearing, with members of Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness and DYA, to even fine-tune this measure even further. This proposed rules and reg was also provided to members of the board a few months ago, I think sometime last year. But then, you know, I understand that the board members are volunteer members, and they have a lot under plate. It's one of the busiest boards. And so we'd like to be able to facilitate this by passing it through legislative action. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Rodriguez. Present to testify on behalf of Bill Number 9-33, we have Ms. Audrey Tapasnia, Ms. Sarah Harrell, and Ms. Mary Rhodes. If you can please join us at the table. And Mr. Bart Jackson's also joined us. So we have two groups basically represented in this panel. We have Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, and the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association, and the private sector. So we'll go ahead and yield, I guess, to our private sector members who are present, or would you like to yield to our government members who are present? Up to you. Okay. So we'll go ahead and start with Audrey.
Good morning, Senators Suniclas, Senator Rodriguez, and all the other senators, and we thank you for allowing us to testify this morning. Just for the record, my name is Audrey Tapasnia. I am the underage drinking prevention coordinator for the Guam Peace Project, and I also serve as the team leader for the Non-Communicable Disease Alcohol Prevention and Control Group. And I'm here in support of Bill 9-33, the Act to Adopt the Rules and Regulations Relative to the Responsible Alcohol Server and Seller Training Programs. To reduce alcohol abuse and prevent underage drinking, it requires a multi-strategic approach. And in saying that, it requires such as individual and environmental level interventions. And individual, we refer to such as family-based or school-based. With environmental, we look at raising the price of alcohol, raising the minimum legal drinking age, and also to include the alcohol server/seller intervention skills training. And that is why we're here to support this bill. So it moves, basically, it moves it forward on what was passed, which was Public Law 32-51. And that's what was, which had established the Responsible Alcohol Sales and Service Act. Our island has dealt with far too many issues with alcohol-related, such as motor vehicle crashes, family violence, cancer, and suicides. We must continue to improve Guam's environmental interventions. And so the passing of Bill 9 will move that process forward, so we can begin to implement the alcohol server and seller training programs as required by Public Law 32-51. So I'd like to thank Senators Suniclas, Senator Rodriguez, and all the other committee members for taking the necessary steps needed to improve our island's, our community's health and addressing safety issues. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Audrey. Next, we have Sarah.
Hafay, my name is Sarah Harrell. I work as a program coordinator for the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center Prevention and Training Branch, but I'm also here as a member or representing the Alcohol Control Group or Action Group from the NCD Consortium, and that's a partnership among many other government agencies and nonprofit organizations. It's being led by the Department of Public Health and Social Services. The information that I will present is basically in addition to what Audrey, my colleague here, had already shared with you. Because of the passing of Public Law 3251, and thank you for the members of the 32nd legislature initiated by Senator Rodriguez, we join, Guam joins 43 other states and territories in having a responsible beverage and server/server trainings and other related practices throughout U.S. So it's really a national strategy. It's an objective that even in the national field, they are implementing. So it's a good step, it's a positive step for Guam, in making sure that underage drinking doesn't happen, that drunk driving doesn't happen, and that we don't lose lives anymore to alcohol-related injuries or deaths. Aside from that, because of Guam Behavioral Health's partnership with Department of Youth Affairs in 2013, like what Senator Rodriguez had already shared earlier, Audrey and I, together with four other trainers, we underwent a training through the Pacific Institute of Research and Evaluation, and that's brought in by Department of Youth Affairs, they are a nonprofit organization. And that was funded by the UDLGRAD, or the Enforcing Underage Drinking Laws by DYA. Before the public law was a law, we were able to meet at least 50 servers and sellers in the private industry, in the beverage/server industry, and we were able to provide them the responsible beverage/server training. So I'd like to share with you how they positively evaluated the training, how they felt it was a very good tool for them to use. Like I said, 100% of those 50 trainees positively evaluated the training, specifically when we asked them in their evaluation form, if they will be able to use the skills that they used from the RBS training in their workplace. 64% of them strongly agree that yes, they will use it, and 36% agreed. So that's 100% of them telling us that yes, they will use it when they are at the bars, when they are at the restaurants, when they are at the mom-and-pop stores, having access to the alcohol for their consumer, for their customer. When we asked them if they would recommend the training to their colleagues in the industry, 92% strongly agreed, and 8% agreed. So this is not us, program coordinators, saying that RBS or any server intervention trainings is necessary in our community. These are the servers themselves. I'd like to share a story that was also shared during one of the trainings. Part of the training is that we discuss experiences, and we try to do a problem-solving kind of discussion with the servers that are involved in the training. And one of the servers in one of the trainings that we held shared that, as an individual, as a server, or as a licensed server, no matter how hard they try to stop somebody, if they have their doubts that this person is under 21, if their boss or if their manager says that, "I got that person covered, go ahead and give them that bottle of beer," as a mayor employee, it's very hard for them to say no. But with the RBS training, it's almost like a license, pun intended, a license to say no, because they are being provided the skills and how to properly put their foot down, and make sure that underage drinking doesn't happen, not on their watch. So with what we just shared, we are very certain that our sellers and servers, they're very ready. They're ready for this training to happen, to be provided to them. So as programmatic people, I think we really need to do what we have to do, to make sure that it does happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Ms. Rhodes?
Hafay, everybody. For the record, my name is Mary Rhodes. I'm the president for the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association. Thank you for this opportunity. I just want to be clear that we are, Public Law 32-51 did pass, and we all understand and really appreciate the intent of this, the spirit of the law. I think that what both Audrey and Sarah, who you both know personally very well, what they're saying, of course, we, as an industry, as a tourism industry, especially those who are responsible as servers and for businesses who are serving alcohol, and licensed and permitted to do so, take their job seriously. And all of these things are important, which is really why Public Law 32-51 did pass. Today's draft bill is really, Bill 9, is really about the promulgation of rules and regulations. So I don't think we're here to really talk about whether or not this is necessary, because we've already been there. We've talked about the value of responsible beverage serving before, and if you look at the record, GHRA was actually supportive, we did not come in and speak against the bill. We wanted to work directly with the ABC License Board in promulgating rules and regulations. I did call the chairman of the ABC License Board, because when I saw the draft bill, I wanted to make sure that he was aware that this was being heard. To give you a little bit of background, starting last year, when we thought that the ABC License Board was going to have to promulgate rules and regs, I personally talked to Senator Dennis Rodriguez about where are they at with this timeline, which they did not meet. They had already passed this timeline. So GHRA requested a meeting with the ABC License Board. We also invited all of the potential trainers who were interested in providing this RBS training, so that we can help identify what are the challenges in training. And again, without taking anything away from the public law, this is really about the promulgation of rules and regulations. So the ABC License Board has had probably four different meetings with the trainers, including GCC, a private trainer who works, actually, a couple of trainers who work in the industry, and one who doesn't, and also GHRA, with our Food and Beverage Committee. We talked about what the curriculum should look like, which was already written into law, what the specific requirement should be. We talked about a timeline to be inclusive of an RFP, and we actually asked the ABC License Board to document a letter requesting for an extension, because they had missed the deadline to promulgate rules and regulations. So that's where we're at today. Unfortunately, in my call this morning with Chairman Franklin Guero, he had indicated that he did receive a letter, with being aware that this was happening, but he did not receive any copy of the legislation. He was quite surprised to understand, and I'm only explaining this because we meet on a regular basis. I just saw him December, just saw him in January, we were wondering when we were actually going to get an extension of this. But what this Bill 9 is putting out is to circumvent the ABC License Board from doing their job. This is actually promulgating the rules and regs to move forward, and there are some, so I'm actually, I submitted that I do approve to move forward with it, but with some changes. So what I'd like to recommend, since this draft bill is still in committee, that we have a roundtable discussion, and we include Public Health, we include Department of Youth Affairs, but we also include the industry, the trainers, and especially ABC License Board, together with the administrator. We've never done that, just so you know. We have only had meetings individually, either with Senator Rodriguez, or either separately with the ABC License Board. None of us have ever come together on this. And there are some things that are very important that we've discussed, that would make this a better set of rules and regulations. No, we're in here to be talking about an RFP process. We only give the administrator the authority to approve the training program. That can carry a lot of weight and political influence, which I think is a very dangerous slippery slope for anyone in the government, giving an agency that authority. I think that Mr. Juan Carlos is a great man, I've worked with him both with insurance industry, and now with tourism. Love him to death. But I think that that's some, who knows when he's going to retire too. And so we don't want to give that much authority to one person, that is why you have an ABC Board. And that ABC Board actually is made up of individuals who, yes, they volunteered, yes, they have other jobs, but they are not associated with the industry. They are not associated with being a trainer, they are not associated with having license or permits to handle or distribute alcohol. So it's very clear that to be on that ABC Board, they asked me, for example, I didn't want it. He tried to get me to do it many times, I didn't want it, because too many of our members, that's their business. But they are a very neutral group, and I think we need to include them. When this bill was first introduced, they were not included. That is the reason why they were so confused. And just so you know, the ABC License Board has gone through two changes in the last three years, because of their inability to have a quorum. And so there are a lot of challenges with the board, but they worked through them this last year, and let's give them that opportunity to promulgate rules and regs and not sidestep them. Let's actually, we've identified our timeline, just so you know, to get to promulgating rules and regs, getting an RFP process, getting trainers approved, and also having training within the first year, because this does allow a 12-month extension, or grandfather period, for servers to still keep their job, and then get a three-year training program. So that's really all I'm asking, is for more collaboration, to include the ABC Board. I think all your industry representatives, both social and nonprofit and business-for-profit, are willing to get together, because we do need to identify the specific curriculum and the RFP process, and we need to ensure that the administrator and rev and tax with the ABC License Board is included in this. Because ultimately, it is their responsibility, and ultimately, they should have, should be able to weigh in on this. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rhodes. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hafay, hafay, everyone. I'm really here to speak on the next bill, but I do want to support the GHRA position in this matter, and that is, of course, we are very supportive of responsible beverage/server training, and it's really a question of creating the consensus. So as Mary said, our position is, we'd really like to see a roundtable, all parties represented, so we can sit down and talk through these rules and regs, which really need to be implemented as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to yield if he has any follow-up questions or comments.
Can I just add one more thing? GHRA has voluntarily, just so you know, worked with providing responsible beverage serving since 1999, with our distributors. So we've been providing responsible beverage serving with a particular program since 99. So there are a lot of people who are voluntarily either certified as a train the trainer or trained, but we certainly don't have everybody in the industry. So we do this on a voluntary basis. I'm sure that the training you guys provided is a voluntary right now, because nothing is into effect because of the public law.
Thank you, Ms. Rhodes. Senator Rodriguez?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your testimony. You know, I respect, you know, everyone's opinion, but I really think that speaking on behalf of the ABC Board, you're out of place in doing that. I think if you speak on behalf of GHRA, that's fine. I think even the comment about this is circumventing the ABC Board, if they just did their job, you know, we wouldn't be here today. And so it's passed, it's about 20 months since the passage of the law, and so that's why we're here today, to make sure it moves forward. They received copies of these many months ago, you know, when they came to my office when I think- when I think Mr. Leon Guero was first appointed. It was Mr. Lanetta and also Ms. Meja. So they have copies of this. The regulatory individual, Mr. Juan Carlos, also has a copy of this. So they're all part of it. And so I think, you know, to say that, you know, we need another roundtable, we need more discussions, we've been having discussions. Even when the first bill was introduced and passed, Public Law 32-51, the board was involved. We had John Ray Titina, who was intimately involved with us in moving this forward. So that's why I think it's very dangerous when we speak, you know, when we're speaking for other individuals. And so, you know, I just want to say that this really needs to move forward. We've done everything in, you know, in ensuring that alcohol stays out of the hands of our youths. We've done things to ensure that now the age of legal authority to consume alcohol is 21. The bar is now closed at 2:00 p.m. That's all the back-end stuff. This is really the front end now, where we're saying we need to train and educate our servers and sellers on how to appropriately and responsibly serve these alcohols. And so, you know, sure, you know, Mr. Chairman, you know, we can have another roundtable. I think, you know, we should respect that, but this, it's time that we move forward with this and ensure that the law is carried out. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Hang on a minute.
Just for clarification, I'm not speaking on behalf. Those are the meetings I attended with them, just so you know.
Okay, thank you. I actually very much appreciate the efforts of Senator Rodriguez to drive this issue forward. Very clearly, the Alcohol Beverage Control Board had a deadline to meet. They were participating in the original passage of the law that set that deadline for the establishment of these rules and regulations. They didn't meet that deadline. And so now Senator Rodriguez is driving this issue forward, and he's taking the helm on it, and that's very much appreciated. But also, too, we do want to listen as well, and I know Senator Rodriguez wants to also. So what the committee is going to do is, we're going to schedule as quickly as possible a roundtable discussion as requested, so that we can get a round of input on the measure. But as Senator Rodriguez stated, we should not be delaying this issue any further than it already has been due to the nonproliferation of rules and regulations that should have been completed by now. He's absolutely right that it needs to get done. So we'll get this roundtable scheduled right away. We'll coordinate with all the interested parties who should participate. And once that roundtable is concluded, we will work with the sponsor of the legislation to craft the final version that will be reported out of committee soon after that. So we're looking at no more than one more month of back and forth on this measure, but Senator Rodriguez is right, any more than that would be a detriment to the community at this point. So thank you very much for your testimony, all of you. It was very well delivered. I was actually very impressed, Ms. Sarah, with the data that you provided, and you were very concise, and it was very well delivered. So thank you very much for everyone's testimony. If there are no further questions from the panel, we'll go ahead and conclude the hearing then on Bill Number 9-33. Thank you very much. I'm sorry. Oh, we are concluded. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have Bill Number 31-33, introduced by Vice Speaker Cruz, an act to amend subsection 26, 120 of chapter 26 of title 11 of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to inspection of tax returns and other information required to be filed or furnished by the taxpayer. I would, at this time, like to yield to Vice Speaker Cruz for his opening statement.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for this opportunity to give some opening remarks on Bill 30-33. Actually, I was surprised that there was a need for this piece of legislation. When the Guam Legislature established the Office of Public Auditor a dozen years ago, it was my understanding that that was going to be the most powerful position in government. Initially, I understand the public auditor, depending on who was the Director of Revenue and Taxation, had access to a whole number of things, and had access to review not internal revenue code tax returns. Everything that was local, the public auditor had access to it. I didn't realize how the process had broken down until I had requested the public auditor to do an audit of the hotel occupancy tax. And when the auditor submitted her report, I was shocked at the inability for her to come to any conclusion because of the efforts of Revenue and Taxation to undermine her investigation, her audit. There were two divisions at Revenue and Taxation that had hotels listed alphabetically and some numerically, and they weren't in the same order, so there was no way of being able to match them up. And so the auditor was unable to give me any substantive report because of it. So when I called her in to ask how it was possible that she didn't have this power, she said, "Well, early, in the early 2000s, the public auditor had the authority, and with different directors, had actually been able to see all these other documents. It's just now that this one is saying that it's, that this director is saying, 'You can't.' The previous one was willing to." So the only thing that this piece of legislation does, Mr. Chairman, is makes it very clear that the public auditor shall have access to everything that is local Guam tax forms. I'm not asking for anybody's internal revenue code filings. I have no business with that, nor should any member of this committee, even in executive session, be, have access to that. But inasmuch as we need the local taxes to underwrite our operations of this government, we should know what is being filed. And even if I don't, or this committee doesn't, get individual reports, I'm not asking that we do that. I am just insisting with this piece of legislation that one person, not Ms. Doris Flores-Brooks, but the public auditor of the Office of Public Accountability, be given that authorization. I don't want to see anybody's tax refunds, whether it's HOT, GRT, whatever. But to have a 200-page publication of everybody's property tax returns published on an annual basis, and then say that you're not supposed to have access to local taxes, but publish it, doesn't make any sense to me. If we can publish that, we can publish anything else that we want to that's local. I'm not asking for publication to the general public. I'm not asking for publication to this committee. I am asking for the single publication to the Office of Public Accountability, to the public auditor. And I think it is imperative that we do so. I don't want it to be left to whoever is sitting as the director and deciding, "Yes, I will do it this year, but I won't do it next year." This authority should be clear that the public auditor has it. And when I invited the public auditor in to explain the deficiency of her report, I was even more embarrassed when she explained to me that she had just last summer attended a conference of the National Public Auditors, and when the question was asked, "How many public auditors in the 54 jurisdictions have access to their local taxes?", all of them raised their hand, save for one lone auditor from the colony of Guam. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Cruz. We have testifying for Bill 31-33, Ms. Doris Flores-Brooks, Mr. Bart Jackson, and Ms. Mary Rhodes. Madam Auditor, you may proceed whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to defer first to the private sector, because I believe they're opposed to it, and I would like to hear their testimony before I comment on my testimony.
At your discretion, Madam Auditor. So between Mr. Jackson and Ms. Rhodes, Mr. Jackson, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And for the record, my name is Bart Jackson. I'm currently the chairman of the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association. I'm not an attorney. I don't claim to be an attorney. I'm a simple innkeeper, and our testimony is based on our understanding of the law and comments from our legal counsel. On behalf of the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association, we write to express our opposition to Bill 31-33, which seeks to amend section 21620 of chapter 26 of title 11 of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to the inspection of tax returns and other information required to be filed or furnished by the taxpayer. The Guam territorial income tax law was established by the Organic Act of Guam, August 1, 1950, and mirrors the U.S. Internal Revenue Code. Title 11 of the Guam Code Annotated already clearly states in section 21620 that the tax returns and other information shall not be open for public inspection or divulged, except when testifying in any judicial or administration proceeding in which the government of Guam or any of its officials in an official capacity are a party in which the government of Guam has an interest in the result, except that any committee of the legislature duly created, authorized by resolution of the legislature, may require that it be furnished any data contained in any tax return for use by such committee in executive session only. It is important to understand and stress the point that tax returns, as well as all other tax and financial information, shall not be open for public inspection. The rules of privacy and confidentiality are clear. In chapter 26 of the IRS U.S. Code, section 6103, there are rules that exist for confidentiality for taxes and other information, and we have an attachment. We must respect the law, the rules of law and the laws of the land. All tax and financial information must be protected, not just for private corporations, but for individuals like ourselves. Private corporations and individuals should expect political freedom from any type of invasion of privacy with tax and financial information. Bill Number 31-33 is trying to circumvent the law and open Pandora's box, if you will. The suggested amendment specifically states that nothing in this section of the Guam Code Annotated shall limit the ability of the public auditor to access tax returns and other information unless such information is specifically privileged by the IRS. This is clearly contradictory, because this type of information exchange, in this case with the public auditor, is subject to public consumption and scrutiny. The privacy and confidentiality laws are in place for many reasons, including privacy as a basic human right, privacy ensuring the safety and liberty of U.S. citizens, tax information containing sensitive data, i.e., competitive information, all tax and financial information protected from third parties, use of tax information can be politically or criminally motivated, privacy is increasingly under threat. On behalf of the private corporations and individuals of our community, we humbly ask the newly-elected 33rd Guam Legislature to understand the consequences of such actions. And should you vote yes on this bill, if we allow this to happen, where does it end? The role of the public auditor is to conduct regular audits and investigate reports to uncover waste and inefficiency in government. In this case, the Department of Revenue and Taxation should be able to provide the necessary information to the public auditor to analyze the work, resources, and processes in the government agency without threatening its integrity as an organization by releasing private and confidential data. Again, on behalf of private corporations and individuals, GHRA strongly urges you to vote no on Bill 31-33. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Ms. Rhodes?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think a lot of this is just related, again, to two main issues. What, I think there needs to be legal review of how much of this is really tied back to the privacy and confidentiality rules already stated in the code. I know that we do have, from our public auditor, Mrs. Doris Flores-Brooks, a section that mentions where it should be open to inspection by state agencies. I am reading in our copy, which we provided as an attachment, that those inspections are with regards to the responsibility for the administration of the tax laws in trying to locate a person who may be entitled to a refund. And so it refers back to paragraph one. It's not carte blanche for an auditor to be able to look at everything that the Revenue and Taxation Agency has. So it has a specific purpose of when going through an audit of why you would need that supplemental or additional supportive of information. So I would just, again, strongly urge that if we are going to open up this for conversation or discussion, we should probably get some legal opinions as well, because this could easily, you know, the Office of the Public Auditor, or it, anything can be given as once it's reported. It is public information at that point. And so just as, of course, you know, Senator Speaker B.J. Cruz mentioned, he found out only because he requested for information from the Office of the Auditor. So who's to say other people can't get that information from the auditor? So it's just another way of transferring information from one agency to another, whereas Rev and Tax is really the responsible agency for protecting that and to ensure that they really are doing their job. And that's the second issue, is this is really about the hot bonds, I'm sorry, the hotel occupancy tax and other taxes, which we all know Department of Revenue and Taxation has had a very long history and challenged with collecting the taxes and being able to report it accurately. I think that we should really look at that issue more so than allowing access to that information. I think that, you know, we've talked a very long time, I've been at GHRA nine years now, and we've talked a long time about whether or not the collectibles and the reporting is being done to the best of the abilities of Rev and Tax. We know they have internal staffing issues. We know that there are internal issues with how it's reported in two different ways. And I think that they've done a tremendous job catching up with a lot of things lately. So I think that we need to look at those things and get the information that way, rather than putting the risk of getting, really putting out the integrity, again, the risk of allowing Rev and Tax to allow another agency access to the information, which is already private and confidential. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rhodes. Madam Auditor?
Thank you, Senator Siniklas. I want to also applaud and thank Senator Vice Speaker Cruz for introducing the bill, Senator Morrison, Senator Torres, Senator Ada, and Senator Underwood. You already have my testimony before you, and rather than read it, I do want to cite a section that I did also do some research. And this is also from the Internal Revenue Code, and goes back to what Vice Speaker Cruz said was the intent of this. And this is, I have the section here, it's code section 26 USC 6103D2, but more specifically in defining a state audit agency. For purposes of this paragraph, a state audit agency means any state agency, body or commission which is charged with the laws of the state with the responsibility of auditing state revenues and programs. And that's really what the role is, is the audit of state revenues and programs. And that's what state auditors do. They do and review the process. Is the state agency, in this case, the Department of Revenue and Taxation, collecting the revenues as it should be? And that is the role of the state auditor to do so. And so the question here, when we attempted to do that audit, was what was the process that Department of Revenue and Taxation had for determining if everybody filed? And we couldn't verify that. We have, I think, the way the annual audit is done, which is audited under the Tourist Attraction Fund does, it looks at it in its totality, okay? They look, how Deloitte and Touche has been doing is through annual confirmations directly from each of these hotels. And we do have a finite number of these hotels, so that's what makes this particular audit a little bit easier, just like the way the Territorial Highway Fund is done. There is a finite number of people who pay these types of taxes, unlike the gross receipts tax, you know, and we have, you know, 20,000 businesses, I believe. Whereas in the case of the hotel occupancy tax, it's a finite number. It's less than 50 hotels in the entire island of Guam. And so the role is, and this is really a policy decision on the part of the legislature, do you want it to be audited or not? If you don't, then you listen and you go with what the role of what the private sector insists, it should not be audited. If you want it to be audited, then it's the policy determination as to who should audit. That's really fundamentally what we're here about. And all state auditors have actually taken, a couple of them, as I mentioned last year when this topic was raised, the majority, everyone in the office, I looked around, who else besides me did not raise their hand? I was the only one. A couple of them had to go to court, but the state agency, the state revenue, relented and allowed them access. So the policy determination here is, should it be, should local state revenues, local Gov Guam revenues be audited or not? That's a policy decision of this body, okay? I'm not here to advocate one way or the other. Right now, we are prohibited from doing that, okay? How does Deloitte do it? They do go through a process to verify the totality of the number, okay? The totality of the process. And it's a little bit more involved, and, you know, I don't, I've just had some discussions of how they do it to render, are the revenues fairly presented? It doesn't, and fairly complete? And they opine on that. And so that's the assurance you get. What was requested was for a more detailed information. We even tried to ask Revenue and Tax. And you're right, they are encumbered with staffing, a lack of staffing, you know, but information as to how do you track? Well, when we went through this, we found that even some were charging the wrong rate, you know, the wrong rate was being charged. And they couldn't, you know, they have the listing of businesses that owed, and so when we checked on this and this, well, they wouldn't tell us if this is so-and-so or so-and-so. And then we specifically said, okay, just block out this number. Let me, let us check these three. They wouldn't, because we already knew who the three was, and if they provided the information to us, we would know who the three was. I said, "Well, we have to check somebody," you know. But again, we weren't allowed that. So the area, the policy decision that this body has to decide is whether or not state revenues, local revenues, should be audited. If you choose not to, then that's a policy decision on the part of the legislature. If you choose to, then who should audit it? That's where I come from, come down, you know, I'm not either advocating for or against. We have enough work to do already, you know, and I, this is, we've done two or three audits, you know, in the case of the gross receipts tax, that'd be an interesting thing to find out, because I know, Senator, you've wanted to get some other information, you know, like, who are the people getting all the exemptions? Again, the policy decision is, should it be audited or not? And that's where I come down. And that is truly the decision that has, because if it is, and states are allowed that, as I mentioned, in this section, you know, 26 USC 36103, states auditing are allowed access to that information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Auditor. To the sponsor of the bill, do you have any other statements or comments? Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments for this panel? If none, I thank you all very much for your testimony, it was very well received. Thank you very much. We will go ahead and conclude the hearing on Bill Number 31-33. And this will take us to the final item on the agenda for this round of our hearing this morning, and that's Bill Number 38-33. Introduced by myself, an act to modernize the business environment by adopting the Uniform Electronic Transactions Act by adding a new chapter 19 to Division III, Title 18 of the Guam Code Annotated. Basically, what this bill is, is it models a law that has been adopted in 47 states, the District of Columbia, Puerto Rico, and the Virgin Islands, that basically sets the framework for us to be able to use electronic signatures as a valid signatures by two consenting parties with respect to any kind of contractual arrangements. Just to be clear, this bill does not require that electronic transactions be conducted. It just gives the legal framework for those electronic transactions to be binding as if they were done on paper. But anybody can still use a paper contract or do business paper-based if they would not want to do electronic-based. But what this act would do is if you do want to do any kind of business transaction electronically, it does provide the legal framework for us to be able to regulate it, enforce it, and adjudicate it in the courts. And that's basically the gist of Bill Number 38-33. And that would conclude the discussion on that bill. I don't think we have anybody here present to testify. We do have some testimony on the record that's been submitted in writing, and the committee will consider that as well as we work on the final version that will be reported out. That testimony was submitted by the Office of Technology and Data Manager, Mr. Joey Manabusin. But other than that, we have no other testimony for Bill 38-33, so we'll go ahead and conclude the hearing on this bill. And that will conclude everything that we have on the agenda for this committee this morning. We will be coming back at 2 o'clock this afternoon. So I guess we'll go ahead and just recess until 2 o'clock today, where we will pick up with the remaining items on the agenda that's been provided to the public. So we'll go ahead and recess at this time. Thank you all very much for joining us this morning.